After worship, I was thinking about hosting Coffee Hour. So it'd be just like this, maybe it'll be crazy, there won't be any agenda, but we could just talk. If you guys want to do that, does that sound good? Okay, we're live, I see it.
Yeah.
I'll bring the.
Back here, very good. We have nineteen.
All right, we have people joining on Facebook.
What are you bringing, Barry?
Cookies.
Cookies, okay, lemon cake, okay?
I'll have my.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I only have coffee, there's no extras in my house.
Jim, you're missing.
Pardon?
Do you see what you're missing?
Oh, I know it, I know it.
We're gonna have a Coffee Hour, you can't.
But your governor.
There's no reason why Jim and his wife can't join.
Yeah. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna go get a, I'm gonna go get something to drink and I'll be right back and we'll get going.
Okay, great, somebody, somebody said that this might be too crazy, but you know me, I like crazy, so we're, let's just go for it. Tim, Tim is always busy after church, so Tim won't be in here, but we can just toss like we are now. And why I have an audience on here and on Facebook, don't forget, I'm gonna make a video of mothers. It can be any mother figure, it can be you, it can be your mother, it can be your mother-in-law. I'm gonna make one of the videos that I've been making, so keep them coming, I'm getting a lot of pictures so far.
What song are you using, Carrie?
I use the free ones that are in the public domain from YouTube. And I've been using classical, but I might make this one a little more funky. Unless you have a song that we can try.
Every time we've done it with camp, they've taken them down within an hour or so, so.
Yeah, the ones I make for Christ Net stay up, but I use, I use a certain language, but I'll just use something in the public domain. Welcome to everybody who's watching us in our Facebook group. We're just getting everyone on and Tim will get started before you know it.
So I'm having a problem here.
What's going on?
So. I've got Facebook Live going, but I'm getting the feedback, so I'm hearing like this time delay thing. You guys fixed it? You can hear me right now, correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, maybe I'm here, maybe I'm hearing it from somebody else's. So, so this is what we have to try here. There. Did anybody else hear that? I just said that before, right?
Yep.
So whose, whose machine is that coming off? Carrie, is that coming from yours?
I turned it off, is it gone?
No.
Does anybody have their phone, does anybody in this group on Zoom have their phone on and put it on live on Facebook?
So I am, I am gonna. I'm gonna mute all. All right, you're all muted right now. It might be on my. I gotta. Just let me, let me just do this here. No, you're not. I'm so confused. I think that was it. I think it was me. Yeah, are we still live, Carrie?
Yes.
Good. Keep an eye on that. So it was me, everybody, it was me. Yeah, are we still live? See, now it's back again, somebody else, somebody's.
Is your wife in the house on Facebook Live?
No.
No? Is she?
All right, I think we're all right. So we're gonna try this. Good morning, good afternoon, evening, whatever it might be. It's, uh, welcome to the, uh, our first attempted. First attempted Bible study online for Avalon Park Presbyterian Church, although we did have a little bit of a, of a experiment here. Um, on last Thursday, I think it was, and it really went well. If you're new to Zoom, this is a great technology, but there's just a couple of things. You should, all should have the ability to mute yourself, and I would recommend that you do that unless you have. Unless you have a question, right? The other thing is, is that you should all be able to find, there's a, you can raise your hand, right? And Carrie has agreed to watch that, so not, not, I mean, you can raise your hand this way, but there's actually a button that you could raise your hand, so if every, you see, Barry found it, I see that. So we get a notification that that's the case. And, um, so that way, anytime that we're going along, if you say, wait a second, I don't understand that, or I have a question about that, I, please, feel free to do that, right? This is an interactive thing, and that's the benefit of it, it's not, I don't, the last thing I want, I mean, I got slides, but last thing I want to do is just sit here and talk for an hour and then everybody go away. Really, we need to engage with it, and, um, Art Use isn't here, is he? I was really hoping he would be there, because I misspoke when we were on the thing on Thursday, he asked the question about, um, Paul, and he asked about Luke. And for some reason, I said that Luke hadn't been with Paul, and the more I thought about that, I'm like, well, that's wrong, because we know that Luke was with Paul for quite a while. So if he was here, I was gonna apologize to him, set him straight, maybe he's figured out that I was wrong, and I'm untrustworthy, he's not gonna watch me anymore, right? So, um, we have, this is, this is a study of the shortest book in the Bible. And that is the book of Philammon. And, um. Or Philammon, I'm sorry, Philemon, Philemon, that's it. And it's, uh, we're gonna go through some of those pronunciations, and if you haven't known me by now, sometimes I can murder any kind of a pronunciation, so we're gonna work on that as we go through. It's a short letter, but it has a lot of great stuff in it, and it's one of the letters that have been attributed to Paul. And between this and his pastoral letters to Timothy are the only two things that we have that are personal letters, the rest of them are letters, what we call epistles, that go to the church. So, uh, different churches that he was involved with, so we've kind of covered a little bit of his missionary journeys and stuff like that, but we're, uh, on Thursday, but we'll come back to that. So what I'm gonna do is I am going to share my screen. But, and, um, Carrie, you can watch, and so if somebody comes in, just jump in here and let me know. I can see over here. All right, you should be. Seeing a full screen there. All right. So it's Phi, the, the pronunciation of this, it's, it's Greek, right, so it's P-H-I is pronounced like an F, so Phi. And then Lee, and then Mon, so Philemon is how you say it. Philammon, some people say, and everybody would know what you're gonna talk about it, the only thing you don't say is Philemon, that's, um, that's something else altogether. So, can everybody see that, or is that, uh? I'm having some trouble over here with. I can move that down here, good, all right, now it's down there. So let's start off with reading it, it's, uh. Start with verse one. This is a letter, it says, Paul, a prisoner of Christ Jesus, and Timothy, our brother, the Philemon. Our dear friend and coworker, to Ephesus, our sister, and Archipus, our fellow soldier into the church in your house. Grace to you and peace from our God, our Father, and the Lord Jesus Christ. This is, um, a very common opening to a Greek letter. So if we look at all of them, it's, it's got the standard greeting, but it always opens up with grace and peace to you from God, our Father and Lord, it's kind of a commonality that's there. So this is, this is something that's common, but it calls out Paul, and it said, he says he's a prisoner of Christ Jesus. So think about that. And then he's got some people, he's got Timothy that's with him, calls him our brother, not, but that's a brother in Christ, and he's writing to, uh, Philemon. Who is our dear friend and coworker, so now it's identified that this person, whoever he is, is a good friend of both Paul and Timothy. And he also works in the same, whatever that they're doing, they work together. And then he calls out, uh, Ephesus, who is our sister, so again, a fellow believer, a woman who's a believer. And then he tells out Archippias, the fellow soldier. And then he says, the church in your house, so here's the early church, this is probably about sixty A.D. There wasn't any churches, there wasn't any standalone churches, churches met in, in, in houses. So wherever they are, Philemon had a church in his house. And then he has grace and grace to you and peace from God, our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. So what this tells us. From the setting, we know that this was written while Paul was in prison. And we also know that he was in prison three separate times. Fifty-eight to sixty in Caesarea, um, and then sixty-one to sixty-three in Rome, and then sixty-eight A.D. in Rome. He was killed in sixty-eight A.D., so, um, most likely, this was written in his first. Yes? Somebody's, uh. Okay, most likely it was written in his first Roman captivity, which was from sixty-one. What's that? Somebody's gotta go on mute, they have background noise.
It's Carol Webb, if you can mute her, she probably doesn't know how, at least she's here.
I'll call her.
I got it, I just muted her, so. I think Art Use is here now, isn't he? Oh, where are we? Here we are, okay, first likely it was written is, now I can't see a thing, Carrie, so if somebody raises their hand, you gotta let me know, okay? Why don't you unmute yourself, Carrie, so at least I have some person to talk to.
Okay, I'm watching about, I'm watching three different things, so don't worry.
Okay, thank you, you're good. We think that this was contemporaneous to the epistle to the Collagians. There's a church, and we're gonna see a map here in just a second. And, uh, this was the same area was where Philemon was. And probably letters were taken by the same person and delivered.
Tim Sherry has her, Tim Sherry has her hand up.
Yeah, Sherry, go ahead. She's gotta unmute herself.
Just curious, dead with sixty-nine A.D., and you said when this first started, he was probably like thirty-ish? Like when he, he started his.
Thirty, yep, he was probably the same age as Christ, so thirty to thirty-five, and probably, or they think around thirty-three A.D. is when he had his transfer, transfer formative experience on the road.
Lived over ninety, like, that's.
He was very old when he died.
Okay. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Lower your hand, Sherry.
All right, the Apostle Paul, he was likely in Rome. And dating these, let me talk about that a little bit, dating any letter is difficult. For a couple of reasons. Number one, rarely do they call right out, it's during the reign of somebody, so that sometimes that helps. But the other thing is that these letters have been passed down, and every time a letter was copied and transcribed, sometimes people would look at it and go, well, he should have been more specific, so they write something in that, that might not have been original to the letter. So sometimes there's been these red herrings that have been put into, into ancient manuscripts, because through the transcription process. And so it's only been. It's really only been since the age of the computer where we can do cross comparisons of all the different manuscripts, and we can kind of find out what's the common kernel in all of them, and then that, that way we can kind of break, get it down, say, well, this was probably the original letter. When you're looking at these things, it's almost like, remember when you were a kid and you would have the can, the game of telephone? You know, you, there would be an original message, and then it would be passed down to, you know, ten people, whispered into their ear, and then at the end of it, you know, it was, stories never get shorter, they always get longer, uh, numbers always get bigger, those types of things. So it's the age of the computer since the nineteen-sixties, nineteen-seventies has really helped us a lot with with knowledge of scripture and what it might have looked like originally, so. And it's all very close, it's not, we're not talking about major changes, but, um, it's just, it's interesting to know what these early letters of the apostles look like. And so this is the map, you can see over here on the left side, on the up, that's that boot shape, that's Italy. And you can see that the lighter color there is Rome, which is where we believe Paul was, this was probably sixty-one, sixty-two A.D. And then in the more magenta, pinkish color, that is the area of where, uh, uh, Philemon, uh, Philemon was. And then you can see there that there's a church in Lacedoia, which was where, um, Paul went through, and then that Ephesus, that whole area was all areas that Paul did a missionary trip in, and there was two missionary trips. First one was forty-four to forty-six A.D. You can see here on the right-hand side, they left out of Antioch down into Cyprus, and then came up into Perga, and then, um, there's two Antiochs, if you'll notice there, there's one, there's one over in Syria, but there's also one up in Cappadocia. And then that whole area through Listra, this is the Listra Valley, which is where we believe that, um, it's also where Colossae is, and that's also where Philemon lived also. The church in Ephesus, Ephesus was very big. This is the second missionary journey, so maybe he did it, because you can see here, he left from Caesarea, and then went up uh, north, and then across and went through that same area again, right? So, uh, perhaps during that time. This was fifty-one to fifty-four. So it could have been during the second, we're not quite sure, but we're all, we're very clear that the church had been established, and that we're fairly certain that the letter, um, to the church and the, the church to the, the letter to the church and Collagians, and also this letter was written in sixty-one, sixty-two A.D. All right, how about the major characters, yes?
Tim, when they traveled on land, what did they travel by?
Uh, foot, donkey.
Jeez.
Maybe camel. There were some camels there. So certainly not Greyhound bus. All right. Let's talk about the major characters, so it's always, it's like a play, you gotta know what the characters are. Of course, we have Paul, which we spent a lot of time talking about. And, um. Timothy, this is all in the, this is the order in which they're mentioned. Timothy is a younger coworker of Paul, and, um. It's. You would think from that, that first opening, that, that Timothy was right there with Paul, but maybe not. Maybe, maybe he's introducing him because maybe he doesn't know. Uh, or maybe he's a joint, he's a joint friend with Philemon, and he's trying to introduce him in, because you're gonna see that he's got a real purpose behind writing this letter. So he wants to make the, the commonality saying, hey, this isn't just me and you talking, this is me and Timothy saying this is what, what should, you should do. So, um, no doubt that Timothy was known to Philemon, and, um. Timothy was, there's first and second Timothy, he was a younger person, um, and Paul's letters to him are wonderful mentors telling, telling a, a younger minister, uh, what he should do, including he tells him, you know, you should drink some wine, because it's good for your stomach every once in a while. So. Here we go, Philemon, a wealthy person, and we know he was wealthy because well, number one is he actually had a home big enough that he could have a house church, and also he was, he owned a slave. So people needed to have money if they did that. We also believe that he might have been a major figure in the early church, perhaps like a bishop, and certainly if that was the case, it would be in the church in Colossae. The same, a lot of the same names that which appear in this letter also appear in Collagians. Apia, uh, it's a woman. They probably say it's, it's, uh, Philemon's wife, uh, but if not his wife, somebody who was, um, heavily involved in the church. Archippas is the adult son of Philemon, we think, we think. And then here's another one, Onisimus, Onisimus, who is a slave that belonged to Philemon. The minor characters, these are people that are married, that are mentioned in the very end of it, but it's interesting to just go through them. Epaphras was an observer of the Apostle Paul, and he's mentioned twice in the New Testament in the epistle to the Collagians, which we've mentioned before, which you think is contemporaneous to this letter. And then once in this New Testament letter to Philemon, which is at the very end, Paul sends greetings in the names of these people that follow, including Epaphras. Now, um, this Douglas Moo was not there, Douglas Moo was writing about Epaphras. He says, little is known about this guy, although we can infer that he was a native of Colossae, and that he was perhaps converted by Paul himself during the apostles ministry in Ephesus. The mention of a coworker at this point in a Pauline epistle is unusual, and the strength of Paul's endorsement of him is also striking, so. Interesting, we think that he might have, uh, been a pretty major player in there. And then Mark, Mark is there. And I said, hold on, this is, uh, this is something that I would like to just spend a little bit of time, uh, going down, and hopefully it's not a rabbit hole, well, hopefully it's a really interesting thing. Woman by the name of Julie Smith, uh, has done a lot of work on this, I admire her work, so I, I, so I borrowed from her. She, there's, there's this big question, the Mark appears, so is this the same Mark that appears that, that has his own gospel, the Gospel of Mark, is it, is it the same Mark that we hear about in Acts? Uh, and so she's, she's studied that, and she said, you know, it was really one of the most common name, male names in the Roman Empire, so it's almost like Bill. But we can't be sure that every reference to Mark in the New Testament is a reference to the same person. Uh, it, it used to be, you know, back in the eighteen-fifties, that some scholars think that it was, that was exactly the case, but we're still not certain about that. And then, so then she, she's done some work here, and here, here it is. In Acts, it records that Peter came into the house of Mary, the mother of John, whose surname was Mark. Where there were gathered, many gathered together praying, and then again, and a little bit further on, in Acts twelve twenty-five, describes John Mark serving as a missionary with Barnabas and Paul. This Mark was obviously called John Mark, and it was fairly common at the time for Jews to have a Hebrew name like John. Or would have been Johann in, in Hebrew, and a Roman name, Mark. So sometimes you'll hear people talk about Mark, and then they'll talk about John Mark, and when they say John Mark, it, it's not, it's, we're basically saying this is the mark that we know for sure, was in Acts, and also the one that, that Paul talks about. But we can't be sure that it's necessarily the mark that wrote the gospel, although it could have. There's evidence here of an association between Peter and John Mark. Peter, again, is, is, was the apostle, and, uh, Peter and Paul didn't see eye to eye on many things. Uh, well, on just a couple of things, but it was, it was a major issue, and, um, so Peter also talks about John Mark. And we also know that Romans would have spoken Greek, but they probably wouldn't have known, and they might have known Hebrew, but they probably didn't know Aramaic, which was the it's a, it's a sub, um, language of Hebrew, and it was what have, would have been what the Jewish people spoke. It's what, uh, Jesus probably spoke himself, we know that he speaks in Aramaic when he's on the cross. And so the fact that the Gospel of Mark has Aramaic supports the idea that the author was John Mark, since he had a home in Jerusalem, he would have known those things. But then on the other hand, if that meant that he was a Jew, if John Mark is a Jew, and then we look at the Gospel of Mark, there's some evidence that it, whoever wrote it isn't really familiar with Jewish customs. So, um, it cuts both ways, we're just not sure about that. But the evidence is mixed, right, and, but, um.
Tim?
Yeah?
Sherry has her hand up.
All right.
How do, what, um, things that Mark showed that he didn't have a grasp of Judaism?
Um, he just talks, he, he's, he shows an unfamiliarity with some Jewish customs. Uh, such as the cleanliness customs, and, uh, calls some things out as being unusual when they weren't unusual at all for Jewish, for Jewish culture.
So what would he have been then?
Well, then, what we would say is that he would have been, he could have been a Hellenized Jew, which means that he was Jewish, but, um, he was made, uh, he became more Greek, maybe because of his parents or grandparents, so that although he might have been a nominal, he, he might have been nominally Jewish, like, how many people do we know that call themselves Christian, yet never pick up a Bible and, and, and never go to a church, you know? So, and, and the same thing with, with Jewish thought, so, uh, the Jewish people, which kind of came out of the Holy Land and, and became more west, westernized, if you want to put it that way, were known as Hellenized Jews, he might have been that.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, uh, second Timothy, he talks about Mark, and he says, uh, Paul says in this, only Luke is with, was with me, take Mark and bring him with thee, where he's profitable to be for the ministry. And the author of this letter, which we always thought was Paul, but some people of modern time are saying, questioning whether it's not, if it's not Paul, it's at least in Napoleon's style. So it doesn't call Mark John Mark here, though, right? So that might mean that it's not the same Mark, that Paul, Paul's Mark is not the same one that we see in Acts. And then finally here, um. We have this falling out between Paul and Barnabas over John Mark in Acts fifteen. Paul did not want to take John Mark on a missionary tour, that he was talking about doing it, because John Mark had apparently abandoned him in the middle of a previous tour. Talks about that in Acts thirteen. And although, um, it's not a flattering portrait, its inclusion in the records serves as a support for Mark's authorship of the gospel. Writing the Gospel of Mark. Since it's unlikely that an early Christian writer would have forged a connection between an absconding missionary that, in a gospel. On the other hand, it's Mark's personal history included, in the abandonment of ministry service, then the theme of the discipleship, especially the failures of discipleship, because he, he actually, he just gives up on it. Uh, it's a key concern in Mark's Gospel, so all of a sudden, that starts to say, if it's not the same, it's still very, very important to recognize that, and then, um, Peter also refers to Marcus, my son. Not that he's his real son, but just that it would be somebody that was very fond of. And, um, that could have happened if he had been Hellenized, so those are the things that we know about that. We have Aristarchus. And he is somebody from Thessalonica, and he's a Christian, he was a close companion of Paul. There's a little bit more information about him, he's just got a very, very minor role here. Think we should move on from that, and then we have one final guy here, Demas. And he's mentioned throughout also, so Paul had these people, right? That were with him, but Demas is interesting here because. And, and Sherry, you're gonna like this, right? We talked about John Mark, that Paul had a falling out with John Mark, we also know that he's falling out with Demas, so. I, he was probably not a really easy person to get to like or to get along with. So, so we can't hold him up in saying that, you know, he's this perfect, nobody's perfect. Paul was very opinionated. Paul was not afraid to tell people what he, what he felt. And he was just a very strong personality, and here it is, because Demas, who followed him and everything, just got fed up with him and left. And not only did he leave Paul, but he, he left the faith at the same time. And then we have Luke, so if, if Art use, if you've joined us, this is for you. Because I made a mistake, I said that Luke had not been with Paul, but that was completely wrong, I don't know where, what I was talking about, so. Here it is, and so Luke certainly was there. And so we have the Gospel of Luke that follows into Acts, and that talks about Paul quite a bit, and we can see that. Paul himself has said that Luke was with him at least several times. What's going on here? Oh, now, last thing we need to do before we get into reading some slavery. This is all, this, this letter is all about a runaway slave. Onicius, and this. So we need to understand a little bit about slavery, and how it was in the Roman Empire. It wasn't like slavery that we had in, in America, you know, in this, from our colonial times up until the Civil War. It was not based on race at all. You became a slave in Rome because through several ways, but one way was that if you were a spoiler war, if Rome, if. If the Romans came in and went to war with you, if you didn't, if you didn't capitulate and just allow them to occupy your land and you fought them, well, then if you lost, you could became a slave. They were sailors that they would capture, a lot of Athenians would get captured that way. And by pirates, and they would be sold into slavery. Or sometimes they were just completely outside of the Roman territories, and they were kidnapped and brought back in and sold into slavery, so that was a little bit more like the slavery we had. And then there was also a form of in-depth indentured slavery, where Roman citizens could raise, they could get money. For either, just pay their debts by free to themselves, or more likely, they sold their children into it. So the slaves and their families were, became the property of the owners, right, and they could sell them, and they could rent them out. Beatings were part of it, if they were, so there was mistreatment, it was not, it was not a great life, although some. Some slaves had, had a better life than others. They worked inside houses, they worked manufacturing jobs, they worked mining things, they worked on farms. They even were learned, and some of them worked in sitting governments and engineering projects. You know, if you take a look at, if anybody's been over to see any of the Roman Empire, wherever it might be. You know, the buildings that you look, and you go, how did they make these things? They were really quite feats of engineering. And sometimes the slaves were used not only in building it, but also for designing it, things like that. Now, here's a really unique thing about slavery is that. It was called manumission. And to be manumitted was the fact that you were freed, right? So that an owner could free their slave, and some of them did it in considerable numbers. And they were freed outright, right, or, or people could buy their freedom. And once you were that, you got documentation, and, and it's not like you, you could become somebody else's property, you were free at that point. And it, and you could be, you could become a citizen at that point. There was a legal, it was a legal document. So for some reason, they weren't allowed to hold office. I don't know, you know, kind of, and, and. Never quite understood that, but that's the way that it was there, and. The, the law gave any children that were born to freedmen. After they were manumitted, this is slaves that became free, they became full citizenships, and that they could hold office. Sometimes, there was not the document that was issued, so it was almost a slave that. Had his freedom, because it was, had it only been told that, and they needed to stay on the sly, so they ran around quite a bit. Trying to stay away, and of course, they could not have any wealth or property or anything like that. All right, so why don't we keep on, everybody okay? Yeah? I think I can see something. There, I can see, I can get this up here again. All right. Does anybody sleep yet?
Not yet, Tim.
All right, thank you.
We got people, we got people on Facebook watching too.
Good, all right, so. Philemon, we're continuing on, there aren't that many, there aren't that many things, what time is it now? So we got, we're gonna go for about another 20 minutes here, and then we'll talk for a little bit, how's that? All right, we'll finish up at another time. So Philemon, he's, we've already entered, he's already introduced himself, that Timothy's with him, saying hello to Philemon, and then this woman and. This other male, we think is his wife and his son. And they pulls the, pulls the card that they're brothers in Christ. And then says, when I remember you in my prayers, I always thank my God, because I hear, I hear of your love for all the saints. And your faith toward the Lord Jesus. Let's stop right there. When I remember you in my prayers, I always thank my God, because I hear of your love for all the saints and your faith towards Lord Jesus. So he's being grateful, right, that, that God has moved into Philemon's life, right, and that, that his faith. Is full, and it's complete, and the fact that he loves all the saints. Saints are all the believers of all time, so. Think about that, it's making a statement. He's, he's, he's appealing to him for some reason. I mean, he could have just said, I find that your faith in the Lord Jesus is, is significant and inspiring, but he doesn't, he says, your love for all the saints, for other people, your love for other people. Then verse six, I pray that the sharing of your faith may become effective. When you perceive all the good that we may do for Christ. Let's stop. I pray that the sharing of your faith may become effective. When you perceive all the good that we may do for Christ. What does that mean? What does that mean? So this was a question that Art used, when we were on Thursday, he said right away, because it was amazing, it's like he just had this, this target right on, wow, what does this mean? And this is a key phrase in the whole, in the whole letter. So I will. So what does that mean? This is what we just read, this is, then what we're reading is out of the New Revised Standard Version, right? If you guys have your Bibles there, you know, look up here, I'm gonna go through a couple of things, that I have access to them, a couple different of the interpretations, but if you have your Bible there. You wanna look at it, and it doesn't, it doesn't include it in here, raise your hand, because then we'll read it, because we'd like to hear from it. So here's the New Living Translation. This is the same thing, right, in different words. And I am praying that you will put into action the generosity that comes from your faith. As you understand and experience all the good things we have in Christ. That's a lot of different words there, isn't it? I'm not sure I understand it. So this is the New International Version. I pray, so that's the same up here as the NRSV, I pray. Oh, now it's different than that, though, isn't it? I pray that your partnership with us in the faith. May be effective in deepening your understanding of every good thing we share for the sake of Christ. Well, let's go back to the King James Version. That the communication of thy faith may become effectual. By the acknowledging of every good thing which is in you in Christ Jesus. There's a lot of different words here, isn't there? So let's go to the message, this is one of the newer ones, I gotta get rid of this. So I can see it. The message was a, one that was just written by Eugene Peterson, and it's a paraphrased Bible, so it's not word for word, it's not literal, it's, it's kind of. He, he takes the jump and says, this is what, this is what the whole context of it says, so he puts it in, in the more contemporary language, so let's see if this one helps us. Every time your name comes up in my prayers, I say, oh, thank you, God. I keep hearing of the love and faith you have for the Master Jesus, this is. He's, he's actually taking this whole verse four through seven, and kind of mashing it together, because he thinks that all four of them together. Tell the story better than just the line by itself. I keep hearing of the love and faith you have for the Master Jesus, which brims over to other believers. And I keep praying that all this faith we hold in common keeps showing up in the good things we do. And that people recognize Christ in all of it. Friend, you have no idea how good your love makes me feel, doubly so when I see your hospitality to fellow believers. Maybe he's on to something, huh? So there's a problem here, so. This is, this is what it is. This is in Greek right here. So when the letter, the letter's been handed down, it's in the original Greek, and this is what it looks like. So who understands that? I can, you know, if you want, I'll, I'll read it to you real quick, if you want me to. So Otas and Conanea tan. Histos soy. Gana, gante, eepa soy. Pantos agathor tal and nu es christos. That's how it would say, sound. Let's see if I can't find something that makes it a little bit better here. Ah, look. Somebody's done it, so this is the word here, and it says Greek, that's the Greek word, and that's the English word that's right next to it. So what we've got is, we can see, so here's. We're not gonna spend the time going through everything in Greek, but this is just interesting to show you the, the moves that an interpreter has to make. So we have, like, Mike throws the ball, right, so we go. We go noun, verb, object, in English. But that doesn't happen in, in Greek. It can be in any order, and then you have, so you have to go searching for stuff, and then you have to put it into, then you have to move it over into the order that we would use in English. So if you were gonna look at this from the standpoint, we have popos, which is so that. The fellowship, right, of the faith, oop, somebody's writing on the screen, fellowship of the faith of you. Might become effective in the acknowledgement. I keep going down here. Of every good thing that is. In us, in Christ. So that's not so bad, but we still have a hard time understanding what that is. Back here. Go back here. So I think that, and this is where I would like to have the discussion. Go back through here. Because the rest of it, we can get through pretty good, the next thing. So this four through seven is really it, so it's, when I remember you in my prayers. I always thank my God, because I hear of your love for all the saints, your faith towards the Lord Jesus. I pray that the sharing of your faith may become effective when you perceive all the good that we may do for Christ. I have indeed received much joy and encouragement from your love. Because the hearts of the saints have been refreshed through you, my brother. Everybody's got to come to their own conclusion on what, you know, on what he's trying to say here. But if we remember, the point of this letter is the fact that there is a runaway slave. And Onisimus has shown up at the doorstep of Paul, and he belongs to Philemon. And he's told Paul that he's run away, Paul has spent time with him, and Onisimus has become a Christian. So Paul has decided that he needs to. Oh, I have to share that again? I'm sorry, you're not even looking at what I am right now. Here it is. Are you guys seeing it now, by Leven four?
Yes, we are.
Very good, thank you. So, so this, so he, what he's trying to do is, he's trying to convince. By Leven to number one, not punish. Not punish Onisimus for running away. Onisimus runs away not for just his freedom, but he's probably been tasked with by Leven, and he has got money, and he didn't, and he's been absconded with the money, so he's in really bad trouble. So he is sending Onisimus back. With this plea of, don't punish him, in fact, you should, because you're a Christian, set him free. So this whole, section four through seven is the pivot point of the letter, because what he's saying here. Is, he hasn't made the request of him yet, he hasn't even let him know that Onisimus is with him, right? He's buttering him up, saying, hey, look, we share this thing, this grace of our Lord Jesus Christ. And the fact that we do that means that, well, we should do everything, you know, that, that is in the will of God. And I really enjoyed watching you, because you really know how to do this well, right?
Tim, Sherry has her hand up when you have a chance.
Okay, so, and so I know you really know how to do this well, right? And, and I've seen the impact that you've had on others, and, and it's wonderful, right? In fact, that's refreshed me, so go ahead.
Actually, it's Joan, you have to unmute her, maybe.
All right, I have to go back.
Sorry, I can't do it.
Well, I can, I can get out of here now, because we're just gonna. All right, who do I have to, who's got their hand up?
It's Joan.
Mom, hit your microphone.
I got it right here. Go ahead, Joan. Oh, wait a second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, how did this slave end up? Knowing to go to Paul and ending up with Paul, and then Paul in turn. Bringing him back, how did he end up getting to Paul?
Because he was, if you remember, by, by Leven became a Christian because of Paul's interaction with him. So he knew of Paul because of that. If, I showed you the map, so you saw where, how far away. Colossae and, and Rome was, right? So that was quite a thing, so he was, Onisimus was on the run. And it was, and he knew that Paul was in Rome. So we don't know the exact reason, he might have been influenced by the teachings of Paul while he, while he was there in Philemon's house. And he might have sought him out. You know, think about this. When somebody makes a change. When somebody makes a change. And transforms himself through the Holy Spirit, right? Sometimes, many times, the story is is that their life is really falling apart. You know, they they're they're on, they're on their last dregs. They don't have anything else that they can rely on. So they say, Lord, move into my life. So it, I've always thought that maybe that was where Onisimus was. He was on the run. He had a hide. He had nothing. He couldn't couldn't uh get any money. Probably been a re- really hurting. Um, so he probably said, you know. Boy, if there's anybody that can help me, maybe it's this Christian Paul. So that's probably that, that's why I've always thought that he sought him out.
Him, Sherry has her hand up now.
Okay, go ahead, Sherry.
Um, kind of piggy, piggy bank backing on it. Why does Paul have to send him back at all? Why are you sending him back?
Well, remember, Paul was a Roman citizen. Right? So um, and so was Philemon and so under Roman law. That he would, Onisimus was the property of Philemon.
Okay. Would he have gotten in trouble if? I mean, he's already in jail, correct?
He's already in jail. He's already in jail, but he's not really in jail. He's in, he's under house arrest for sedation. So could he have gotten into more trouble? Yeah. But what he really wanted was he wanted Onisimus to have his freedom. Right? So if he had hidden them, he wouldn't have, he he wants. Paul wants uh Philemon to man him. He wants to give him his freedom so that he's a free man. And and he's pretty convinced that he can. Then he's pretty convinced that he can do it too. Anybody else have anything? Time is it? We've got a little bit of time. So let's go on a little bit more, okay?
Wait, we have Barbara. Uh Wolf has a question.
Go ahead. Let's see.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I have a study Bible. It's the. Living True Study Bible. It's in IV. Um, now I've lost my spot. On this was what Oniscus, the slave had stolen from his master in one O R. He ran to Rome where he met Paul and there he responded to the good news and came to faith in Christ. So it's, it's like. He ran off to Rome and then he met Paul. He, had he not known him before that?
Well, I think that, I think he might have known of Paul. But he, but no, I I mean, it's, and he didn't become a Christian until he met Paul in Rome. I mean, Paul converted him in Rome. But um, he probably knew of Paul. Because Paul had stayed, Paul had stayed in in Philemon's house.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Cheryl. I have a question.
Yeah, Cheryl.
So does that mean then from what she just read that? He that the the slave didn't intentionally go directly to Paul, that he just fled to Rome and coincidentally, and maybe God's plan? That Paul saw, they saw each other?
Yeah.
Is that?
So while they're, that's, that's, who knows for sure? I mean, I I I can't tell you for sure. Here's the other, here's the other thing that that might have happened. Paul could receive visitors and he could receive gifts. And he continued to get support. So. Philemon might have sent Onisimus to him, right, with this gift or this present. And um. And then Onisimus, you know, frittered it away on the way and and um, and and is very concerned about that. I've always kind of dismissed that theory in my mind because um, if that was the case. Why would Paul, Paul a bit later on says, hey, if he owes you anything, charge it to me, you know, I'll I'll cover his his debt. I always thought that Paul, if that was the case, Paul would just say, hey, thanks for sending Onisimus. I really enjoyed it. Great. He wouldn't even mention the fact that, you know, that there was this missing money. Um, but, but it does, it it is a little bit later in the letter. We'll see that, that that is mentioned.
Okay.
I will uh. We'll go a little bit further than here. All right, so we got, we finished with seven. There's only twenty five verses, folks. Right. I'm open eight, five, uh, for this reason, I am bold enough in Christ to command you to do your duty. Yet I would rather appeal to you. On the basis of love. And I, Paul, do this as an old man. And now also as a prisoner of Christ Jesus. I am appealing to you for my child Omesimus, whose father I have become during my imprisonment. Formerly, he was useless to you. But now he is indeed useful to both you and me. I am sending him, that is my own heart, back to you. I wanted to keep him with me. So that. He might be of service to me in your place during my imprisonment for the gospel. But I prefer to do nothing without your consent in order that your good deed might be voluntary and not be something forced. So that's, let's stop there for a little bit. So now we're starting to get it a little bit more. Um, some of the things that we talked about, which is great because it. When we. When we talked about that and we were, we're reading critically, which means that as we read something, we're forming questions in our mind about, well, why would this happen? And why would that? And when we do that, we can really gain uh quite, quite a bit out of that. My goodness, what did I do here? Um, so we have um. We're starting, the story's starting to get a little bit better here. And what he's saying is. Look. I'm, I'm brash enough. That I would just come right out and command you to do it because, you know, you, you have a responsibility to me and I, and I have uh. Uh, you know, you're a bishop and I'm ahead of that church and so you could rather do, but instead. I want you to do this because it's the right thing to do. It's, it's the thing that it's the Christly thing to do. And he says, you know what? And he says, I'm old. But somebody asked the question about, you know, when he was, how old he lived to be. So. He's, he's getting to be a very old man. He's probably what, in his sixties? So if he was. So he's, he's in his sixties here when this is happening, which is pretty old for that time. And also as a prisoner of Christ Jesus, so he's, you know, that he uses that quite often in his prison letters. So. He is being imprisoned because of his belief and his faith in Christ Jesus. So he is a prisoner of Jesus, not of the Rome. He refuses to acknowledge Rome in that and. I'm appealing to you for my child. He calls Onisimus his child, right? So he's been under the tutelage of Paul for a while. Formerly, he was useless to you. So. It means that whatever he did, he just, he was no longer there. He was, he wasn't doing anything for for uh, I mean, but he, he left, he had absconded. But now he's both indeed useful to both you and to me. And here it is. I'm sending him, somebody asked this question. I'm sending him back. I'm sending him, that is my own heart. So now he's, he's part of me, just like, just like. Uh, when Philemon and Paul started the church in Colossae, right? They were, they were together. They were of the same heart. So here he is. I'm saying, he, I wanted to keep him with me so that he might be of service to me in your place. So, you know, he's really laying it on. He's really buttering him up on this point during my imprisonment for the gospel. Because remember. Hey, you're free. I'm in prison. So. You know, I I got it worse than you. But I prefer to do nothing without your consent. In order that your good deed might be voluntary and not something forced. So we're all getting this, right? Perhaps for this is the reason he was separated from you for a while so that you might have him back forever. No longer as a slave, but more than a slave. A beloved brother. Especially to me, but how much more to you, both in flesh and the Lord? So there you go. So a slave, his name is Dulas. If that's the Greek word for a slave is Dulas. We get um. Um, um, have you ever seen a Dulas in midwifery? They call the woman that comes in and helps the Dulas and that's actually comes from slave. Um, but he's saying, look, you were a slave, but now you're a brother, right? And and. Especially to me and now you too. So he's really laid this on. I'm gonna go back up here. We're gonna stop there for the night. Um, if that's okay with everybody. And uh, we'll finish this up. Um. We'll finish this up uh next week. But you guys can um uh continue through it uh on your own. And if you have any questions, certainly let me know. But the um. Trying to get this. This big view here. I don't have a problem with it. There you are. Good. So. Where are we with this? Who's got a que- any questions before we leave?
Yeah, I.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm still going back to six, okay?
Good.
I haven't given up on it.
Good.
But now that you've shown me the different versions of uh translations. Uh, my thought is. That Paul is explaining to him or he's seeing in him. Uh, that he has a greater understanding. Of who Christ is. And what he has in Christ.
Because of that?
Would that be my? Uh, a correct interpretation of what I saw in the translations?
I think that um. Yeah.
I mean, it it's not these, I know, but you gave several of the uh translations like uh.
Yeah.
The NRV and and all the other stuff.
Yeah.
So. As I'm looking at this. And it's saying, I pray that. The sharing of your faith may become effective and powerful because, because of your accurate knowledge. It's said so weird to me until. I could say, okay, that was an experience that he had. In Christ.
Right.
Somewhere along the line, something happened in him that made it more apparent. Of who Christ was, not just a series of words. But of life itself.
Yes.
Is that what I'm understanding?
I think you're very, I think you're, you're, you're on to it. And I thi- I don't think that there's any one thing that we can say, this is the singular thing that it means. I think that it was written this way be so. That many people can be affected by it. And it will, no matter where we might be. And when I read this, I'm saying, he, I say that he's saying, he's saying, I'm praying, right? I have seen you, these are my words, is, I have seen you, Philemon, do wonderful things for Christ, right? And that you, and your faith and your belief in the, in in uh, your belief in the saints of all time, right? But. I don't doubt that, but I hope that it becomes effective. I hope that it becomes. Uh, actionable, right? When you look and you see all the things that we can do good for Christ. And and then in the background, you gotta remember what he's asking is. You need to do something, you need to free this slave because this is the Christian thing to do.
Him, Joan has her hand up.
Certainly. But but before we leave that, Art, does that help?
He's saying yes with his head, Mary.
Oh, good. Okay. And who was it? Joan, do you said?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What we, you just talked about in the last uh, well, just before we end it. He didn't, Paul didn't take the slave back immediately then. He kept the slave with him for a time and then the slave. Became a Christian. Before he went back, before Paul took him back.
Um, yeah, um. So you, you ask a good question. It's not clear. We think that this letter to Philemon and then the letter to the church in Collageia, the, you know, Collagians. We think that those were probably taken by the same person and back. We don't know that it was Onisimus though. So, um, but it's pretty clear that Paul's intention is that um, Onisimus is, he's gonna send him back. And he's sending him back. He said, hey, I could really use him. He's been really good. Uh, he's a Christian, you know, now he believes. And but you need to do something. And then what you need to do is give, make him a free man. And uh. So. He probably didn't stay with Paul, but it doesn't mean that he's going back with this letter, you know, to say, don't beat me until you read this, read this letter. Um, so Paul had, and and we'll see a little bit later on. Paul had probably at least five or six people with him in Rome. So he had access to people that he could send, you know, communications back and forth with. Does that help, Joan?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I think my wife is asking a question. You gotta, gotta unmute you here. I could find. Oh, hold on, I can get it. Go ahead, Meg.
Where are all these people that were with Paul when he's under house arrest?
Well, house arrest is just that. So he was probably, he was in a house that um. He was just, he was limited. He couldn't leave Rome, but he probably had access to everything around Rome. He just couldn't leave the province.
But where are the people that were traveling with him then?
Probably staying in the same house.
Okay.
Yeah. So he was in Rome. Um. We know it was kind of odd because he was, when he was in Rome his second time. For, when he was in Rome for this prison sentence here, um, he was freed. But. He also wanted to go to Spain, what is now modern Spain, Hispania. And he wanted, he wanted to go on a missionary trip there, but he never go, he never went. So he actually went back the other way. He went back east, which. Which goes against what, what he had written in some of his letters, that what he was gonna do next. So he had a reason. In fact, it was, well, one of the ways that we know that is because in, at the end of this letter, he tells Philemon, he said, hey, do me a favor. Prepare a room for me because I'm gonna come visit you. So. So all of these people would have been in very close proximity to him. It wasn't like that he was in a prison cell and they had to go through a lot of security and things like that. It was just, uh, it was very much just, they were sharing a house together while they were in Rome.
Okay.
Now that, and the only reason he had that was because he was a Roman citizen. So anybody else would have been in a, in a jail cell? Any other questions? Was this all right? What should we do? Should we continue on with this next week, same time or same station? And when we finish this next week. I'm gonna start working on another one. So I wanna know what. I I'd like to hear some thoughts about what people would like to see next. This was, this was done because it's a short letter, but we don't need to do that. So. Um, we don't need to worry about short. I mean, we can, we can get into to any, we can do a specific book. We can do a a subject. I'm wide open to what you guys might do. And the first person that asks generally has an advantage over the others. So.
No, Paul.
No, Paul? No, he won't do Paul.
Moving on.
I like the book of James.
James, the Epistle of straw.
Not about relations. Barry and Margot have their hands up.
Yes, Barry and Margot.
Just me. Um, I don't think we can do it next Tuesday. Isn't there a meeting?
Was that, is that a session meeting?
It's, it would be deacons, wouldn't it? It, it would be deacons, wouldn't it, here?
Yeah, would be deacons, I think.
So what makes some more sense here?
Wednesday or maybe Tuesday.
Does it have to be in the evening?
No. We just, this is, this is all an experiment, right? And so we wanted to see how many people that we would get here and how much interest that we would have. So the fact that people seem to be home, we could probably do it. Go ahead, Carrie.
So we need to pick a book, a verse, or a topic.
Right. I don't wanna do a whole gospel.
Blame you.
It would take too long.
Revelations.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
No. I'm already afraid.
The Book of the Seven Seals. Now, James is a good, but we can do James. Um, so here's the interesting thing about James. So the, one of the fathers of the reformed faith was Martin Luther. And of course, now being Presbyterian, we kind of follow under Calvin, who was, who, who was a little bit, little bit behind Luther. Luther was in the fifteen tens and, and Calvin started in the fifteen twenties. So they're about ten years separating them. But they, they came to much of the same conclusion. Both, both Catholics and, and upset with the Catholic Church. Um, Catholic priests that were upset with the Catholic Church. So, um, so, but Martin Luther, Martin Luther, uh, very much more opinionated. And when he looked at it, he didn't like James. And the, and he, so he called it the Epistle of Straw. And the reason why he did it was because he said there was no body to it. Because he, he believed that James makes one statement, it might, it'll probably be the, the statement that we end up talking about the most. And he talks about salvation, right? And he says a statement, if you show me, show, if you show me faith, right? I'll show you, I'll, I'll show you works. So it becomes this thing saying, are we saved by our faith or are we saved by our works? So he maintains that, that James makes the statement that it is more your works. You earn your salvation. There it is through your faith, which is just completely opposite of the reformed understanding. So that's why, so the end result was since he couldn't explain it, he dismissed it. So, uh, that's an interesting letter, but we'll take a look at that. We'll look at James. All right, so we can't go Tuesday. How about we finish this up this week then? How about we do, how's Thursday at like two o'clock in the afternoon for everybody?
Sounds good.
Right? So we'll finish this one Thursday at two. So we'll be done with that this week and then next week we'll pick, we'll pick, uh, I gotta look at the calendar, but we'll put it out. So we'll, we'll pick another day and we'll start in on James. And James would probably be a two or a three week study to get through it all. Right?
All right, I don't see any questions on Facebook Live.
So two o'clock on Thursday, right?
Yes.
All right, we'll set it up. Hey, it's been fun to be with you guys all tonight. I hope you learned something.
We did.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
And I'm always trying to figure out the best, this is new to me. I've never done a Bible study through here. So if there was something here that bothered you, or you think that we can improve it somehow, please let us know, cause, uh, we'll certainly do it. Okay?
Thank you, Tim.
All right, how about we pray before we go? Lord, the word, your word that has been given to us through scripture. Or we have to make an active movement to understand it. So that means we need to interpret it into our own hearts and we, we're incapable of doing that ourselves. But when we have the Holy Spirit in us within, Lord, these simple words become alive. And they develop meaning for us. So we know that it, uh, this has touched each one of us in different ways, all for your good. So Lord, just continue to bless us with your presence in our lives. Illumin our lives and our past through your word. And we thank you for the gift of life that you've given us in Jesus Christ. And we ask this all in your name. Amen. All right. God bless all.
Hi, Tim. Before you, Tim.
Yeah.
Remember you were talking to me at the beginning about the light and what gospel is it from?
Yes.
Well, ironically, I thought, well, I'm gonna flip through the gospels and I had a bookmark at Matthew. And at number fourteen, you are the light of the world.
Yeah.
No one after lighting a lamp puts it under the bushel basket, but on a lamp stand, it gives light to all your house. Let your light shine before others, so they may see your good works and give glory to your Father in heaven. So is that what the Bible, when you were looking for?
Exactly, Matthew fourteen.
Matthew fourteen, yep.
You're right.
And I had a bookmark there for some reason, but.
You know what? I have to say, you've just continued to shine through this whole thing. I can see you better now than we could at the beginning, so.
I think it's because it got darker. I don't know, the, the light, I don't know. I've been up since two o'clock this morning. We went to Walmart shopping for groceries.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
We hit the mother load though. It was well worth it. I've been ordering my groceries and I've been too afraid to go out, but I had to. So since everybody's in face mask, everybody says that if you go senior hours, you have a good shot. It worked out well.
Oh, good.
Did you ask, did, did you get toilet paper?
I got paper towels. I got Clorox wipes. I got, um, I was able, I didn't need, I really didn't need toilet paper, but I grabbed a pack just because you don't know how long this is gonna happen.
Right.
And, oh, quite a few other things that I haven't been able to get. The odd thing I can't find is my caffeine free Pepsi though. They, for some reason, the stores don't have it.
So John, do you have your hand up? What, did you have something or you just, do we not?
She never put it down.
Okay.
Can you stop sharing your screen so we can see each other before we go?
Oh, really? Is that me?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe.
There we go.
I wanna know how to get one of those backgrounds. That's so cool.
You know, you guys, if you guys just keep talking, we don't have to turn this thing off. You guys wanna visit for a while, feel free.
Okay, if any, if anybody is on your computer, I can tell you where to look for those backgrounds. If you look down on the bottom, do you see the mute? And then the, the stop video? Right next to the stop video, if you click up, it'll give you a choose virtual background.
Oh, I don't have that. Mine just says share.
Mine's not.
On the computer, I'm on iPad.
Does anybody else have a way of doing it that? No, I think, I think she has to have downloaded the Zoom program. I agree with Barry. I think you have to download Zoom.
Right, I came into Facebook. I do have Zoom on here, but I didn't come in through that program.
Oh, that might be it then. Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, you have to load it yourself to have an account yourself to be able to do those things.
Oh.
And it's a free account, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, make sure, if you're gonna sign up for an account, it's great, but make sure you don't pay for it.
Mine says photos. Is that where, what does?
Yes, try that.
Hey, everybody, just an FYI.
Yes.
Uh, I downloaded the Zoom app a week or so ago, but then just yesterday I was reading a magazine article about security issues with Zoom. And it's specific Zoom app, because it hasn't been updated yet.
Oh.
So that's why I came on through the web tonight. I'm not using the app.
Yeah, there.
You mean like the app on your phone?
No, I, I downloaded the Zoom app to my desktop.
Okay.
If you're running, if you're running Windows ten, it runs through apps, so you're right.
And the biggest problem is people coming into your meeting and acting weird. I, I don't know if there's any way of doing anything besides that.
One of the, one of the things the article about security mentioned was, um, using a password to get into meetings.
Yes, we could do that.
Yeah, that's, that's so weirdos don't join in.
Yeah, so people can't just jump in.
So the, the, um, what we, the line, that final line that we have is saying, okay, we're a church, we're open. We want people to participate versus closing it down for security purposes and saying that. So what we've decided is we're gonna, we think that we're a pretty low risk, you know, and we don't. And, and one thing we don't do is we don't put the meeting ID out in open, you know, in open places. We say, hey, look, if you'd like to join us, you know, join our constant contact, and then it goes through that. So it's kind of a closed one. But there's some pretty big places and they get these things called Zoom bombing. And so people jump in on it and then they usually, they're usually putting up indecent pictures and things like that, so.
I'm gonna see, I'm gonna see if I can get like Blake Shelton or someone to join us next time.
Awesome. Be here.
Well, this was great. I really needed this.
Good.
Yeah, and it really helps to see people, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
I have a new family next door and there's a little girl and she has a playmate that lives down the street. And she's been playing with her, oh, since she moved in, but now she can't. And I look back there, she's sitting back there and she looks so sad and I just wanna cry there, you know, she's just new to the neighborhood.
I think my neighbors are in the witness protection program. They seem really, they seem really to themselves.
Well, they'll like this then.
We have neighbors like that right now too.
Yeah, I live in a, I live in a duplex, so we have the same porch. It's a long one, but if I go out there, they act like I'm poisonous and like normally kids flock to me like magnets, so I don't know.
Oh, dear. Well, this is just really hard on everybody.
It is.
I've got grandkids around. I can't go see my grandkids and so I FaceTime them when I can, and that, that helps. But I'm physical with my grandkids. I like those hugs, you know, I need those hugs, cause I'm by myself. And, uh, so that's the hardest part for me is that lack of human.
Yes, I, I agree with that because I, I had been alone and I haven't been out at all. But my, one of my, one of my sons came and brought me groceries and I told him he could put them in the back door. And, um, I was standing about twenty-five feet from him and I, I just think it's horrible to live in a world where I'm afraid of my own son, who I love more than anything.
And, and you're really, you're just, you're afraid of the unknown. That's, that's it. We're afraid of something we can't even see and that's so hard to deal with.
That's, I agree. That's what I'm afraid of, cause I'm, I'm really tough. I'm a really tough person.
You know what? The, what the science is telling us that in this area, we keep this up. Couple more weeks, it will be okay.
Yeah, my, my youngest.
Stay in until June first.
My young, my youngest son Ryan works at the church and he told Judy Martin that he wasn't allowed to come see me. And it's true. And he, he thinks I have a grim mindset, but he doesn't realize the reason I won't let him see me is because if he was to get me sick, he would have to live with that for the rest of his life. It's not because I don't wanna see him. I would do anything to see him.
And that's what my girls say, my, they say, Mom, we're, we're protecting you because we don't want, you know, at my age and.
Well, our, our biggest, our biggest discussions on, within the session has been, it's not if the government says, oh, yeah, you know, all the restrictions are off. It's like, is it safe knowing how many of the high percentage of people in the church that are at risk because of their age and other things?
Right.
And then.
Disability that you might have, any problems. I have kidney problems.
Well, I came out of the Lake Michigan Presbyterian before, before you guys stole me.
Barry.
Look at Barry.
Excuse me. Barry. Hydrophated Barry.
Barry.
Excuse me.
But no, they, they, they have, they, uh, agree as a Presbyterian that nobody is gonna have, nobody will have in-person worship until, um, until the first week in July. You know?
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's way out there.
I mean, I, so, I mean, we're gonna, we haven't even reached that point yet. I mean, we gotta, the numbers have to do what the numbers are gonna do, you know, and then we'll see. But it would be.
You have to admit, the online worship has been an absolute blessing in so many ways. And no matter what, I'm hoping that will continue it.
Yeah.
I like the fact that Tim's in church and we have people in church who are having our organ. I can see the cross. I get a sense of peace seeing those stained glass windows. It's just, you know, I know some churches, they're not doing it in their church, but my uncle in Georgia, his minister, the same thing. He goes into his church and his wife films them and, and they broadcast it. And he actually preached on the same sermon on the road to my, um, Amayus on Sunday, you know, but, um, yeah.
Which one was better?
Ours.
That was a really good sermon this week.
Yeah, I know. And every once in a while, blind pigs find equal parts, you know?
It was really good. It's, it's hard to pay attention to me working and putting the comments when I got a little tear in my eye.
You do such a great job at that.
Thank you, Judy.
I think it's awesome.
An issue.
That way I don't have to have my phone on plus the other and looking back for it.
You guys wanted, Judy bought a, Judy bought a brand new iPad so she could download a copy of the bulletin and watch. And I started putting it in the comments the very next week. She's like, I'm gonna kill you, Carrie.
Yeah, I just got the bill.
Yeah, I got a text from her. She's like, great.
Well, you know, and, and we keep doing it like, um, Matt Carlson and I are going into the church and we'll, and we'll work with Carrie tomorrow. And we're trying to say, hey, can we use Zoom as our origi, origination? So that we can, our worship can have a little bit more elements to it. However, it's gonna be the same experience for people that like it on Facebook Live, because we're gonna push it out there. So we're gonna fool around with that. But then maybe some people wanna come in and do it through a Zoom, uh, because it, you know, it's a little bit more personal or interactive, whatever it might be. But they had, it's, it's, um, um, you know, we, we, we've tried every week, we've, we've put something else into it and it's become a little bit better. And we used, I mean, the first week that we did it, we needed seven or eight people there to, to carry it off. And we, we're down to four, so that's really cool, that the fact that we can do it. And, and everybody, you know, we're the same people for the most part, so.
Judy, I have a, Judy, I have a message for you from your son Tom. He's watching on Facebook Live. He says Judy needs to call her son, so I don't know what. I don't, I don't know what.
The phone works both ways, folks.
He can hear you, so just.
I don't care. And I think it's. Did everybody, did everybody see the wonderful news about Kelly Whitlock's daughter is off the vent?
Uh, duh, duh.
That's good.
I said, duh, they're part of my family.
Yeah, it's, well, I know that, Carrie, but it's a wonderful thing.
That's great. There's been, there's been an awful lot of people praying for that.
Yeah.
Praise be to God.
Tim?
Yes.
I find it interesting. I usually, my regular church is a congregational church in Dearborn, up off of Southfield. Very small church, a normal congregation of like, you know, on a good Sunday, fifty people. It's just a small congregation. And we just got a new pastor also. He did two services and this happened.
Yeah.
So I'm torn, so I have to listen, I have to take turns listening to one of you tape, because you, you booked it on a ten o'clock on Sunday morning.
So he doesn't know anybody in the, he doesn't really know anybody in the area then, does he?
No, and, and he came from West.
Why don't you give him my name? Tell him to give me a call.
Okay. He's the next, ah, I think that's really cool.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we, we live, we live right here in Dearborn, you know, so, yeah. I mean, he probably, he needs.
He actually lives in Anna.
Oh.
So it's.
I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to talk to him if he, if he needs somebody.
Well, tell him about you.
Ministers hang together. We watch out for each other.
Yeah, and Barbara, Barbara, believe it or not, this is, this has helped us get to know Tim a lot faster than by normal means.
Uh, yeah, it, it really is kinda nice. And I depend on, although this morning, I'm already like a quarter to nine to be ready for the night. And I went in to get some more coffee or something and I got sidetracked and all of a sudden it's like twenty-five after. I went, oh, and it happens to me all the time, so, so I listen to it.
We're, we're gonna take off.
All right.
Bye, Tim.
Hi, June.
Bye, you should say goodnight. This was great.
Judy, your son Tom and Andrea are both laughing.
Oh, they can just laugh all they want. I don't care.
Night, everybody. I'm gonna sign off.
All right, Barbara, it was good to see you. Take care.
So Sharon, Sharon, have you gained, are you gaining any appreciation for Paul at all?
Um.
Is he still a jerk?
I'm so jaded against him, like, but I think he's more jerky now. He kept him, probably gave him hope, and, and then said, I'm turning you back over.
He, he's a user. Paul is a user. He, he, he used people. There's no doubt about it.
Sherry.
Novelist.
Sherry, I dare you to tell Tim privately some of your theories sometime.
Okay. Sherry, I, well, okay.
Don't do it here, because we're still on Facebook.
Oh, yeah, never mind.
Sherry?
Yes?
I have to agree with you totally, what you were saying about Paul, because that is how I filled him out for a long time.
It's fun, and I, and it's like every, like, we went for the mission trip with the kids this summer, and the, our commissioning, the sermon was about Paul, and I'm just like rolling my eyes. I'm like, okay. And then we went down south and went to the Southern Baptist Church, and they preached on Paul. And I'm like, I can't get away anywhere. And I'm like, and it's like God is like telling me, you gotta like him. And I'm like, I just, and like, and again, I know I'm jaded, and I should probably see the good, and I, I want to, but I just can't. I don't.
You're a really strong person. Sherry asked me, Sherry asked me who wrote this Bible study, and I'm like, um, Paul.
You know, it always interests me that there's so much that Paul's written, but not that much from Peter.
Right.
And that was my, how much?
Carol, can you unmute Carol? Because she probably can't talk and doesn't know how to unmute herself.
Who?
Carol Webb.
Spot him in the dark.
Oh, yeah, there it goes. I can unmute her. There you go. She's unmuted now. Hi, Carol.
Hi, how are you?
Good, we can hear you now.
Good.
Hi, Carol.
Carol, is your camera on? Is your video on?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a picture.
She's in the dark.
In the dark, there she is.
Lucky you.
I can only get nine pictures at a time. How do you get more?
Top, top right, there's a speaker view and exit full screen and a full screen up in the top.
And it looks like the Brady Bunch.
Yes.
Squares, hit the Brady Bunch squares.
Is anybody else on an iPad that can tell her what to do?
But you have to, if you're on a phone or an iPad tablet, you have to scroll, because it can only show so many at one time.
Oh, okay, I can only get nine at a time. I've pushed, pushed every little button I can. I can't scroll. I can only get what's there.
So Peter, so I have to say that Peter is this, maybe, and maybe we'll look into that, because we only have the one, you know, we have very few. But Peter is this, he's this guy that is all in for Christ, right? And, but he also, he does the goofiest stuff sometimes. And, you know, it's like when, when they're up for the enunciation, when, when Jesus has got them up, and then all of a sudden Elijah and Moses and Jesus are there, and they, and they become transfigured, right? I mean, his response is, well, oh, we'll make three tents, one for each of you. Like, what's that? You know, he, he just gets, his bind just kinda goes, and then he, you know, he's also the one that's the most willing to say, Jesus is walking on the water. So he says, well, I'm gonna go out there with Jesus, and he gets out, and he's walking on the water, and then all of a sudden, he realizes, I, I'm not, I can't do this, you know? And so he just, he's just so all in, but he's also this mercurial person that, that, you know, that, that can't see the big picture, because he gets so, he gets so involved, he gets so enthusiastic about, about what's right in front of him, that he can't think about the future. He's the one that Christ says, you know, who am I? You know, who am I? Three times, and then, and, well, you're, you know, you're the Lord, you're the Messiah. And he says, oh, you know, blessed are you, Peter, and here the key, here's the keys to the kingdom. And then he tells him that, well, we're going to Jerusalem, and I'm gonna be killed there, and, and then I'm gonna be raised. And he says, well, Lord, we're not gonna let that happen to you, you know, and, and he tells, Jesus tells him, get behind me, stay, stay. You know, he just.
I just was always interested that he was supposed to be the rock of the church, the start of the church. And then all of a sudden, Paul comes along, and it's all Paul.
Yeah, but, but Peter was the bishop of Rome, right? So, but it actually, and then after Peter died, it was probably Jesus's brother who followed him up, so.
Which sword in the garden? Was it Peter that threw the sword in the garden to fight when, when the soldiers came to take Christ?
He cut the ear off, cut the ear off, and Jesus puts it back on and says, no more. Yeah, very mature.
I'm still, I'm still hung up on the slaves that weren't good and useful, because you know me, I'm always fighting for the underdogs.
Sherry, will you raise your hand?
Yeah, I, I get, my question was, like, in the, in the First Council of Nicia and all of that, like, how much, was, A, was Paul there? How much pull did he have to get his, his stuff in? He wasn't? No?
No, it was two hundred years after the time of Paul.
Okay, okay, and. So obviously, he's still.
So, let me tell you how the canon came to be, right? There's all this, so the canon is the books of the Bible, right?
Right.
And, and don't think that what's, the books that we have in our Bible were the only things that were considered to be scripture. There was a lot of other stuff that was, you know, flying around.
Mary Magdalene story.
I'm sorry?
It said Mary Magdalene story that didn't make it in.
Right, and then, I mean, there's the secret gospel of Thomas. There's also, you know, there's also another gospel of Christ, where, you know, they've got Jesus is like killing small, as a boy is killing small animals, and then reanimating them. That, that one didn't make it either. So, I mean, but what they've been looking at is they said, well, how are we gonna know what's sacred scripture? And then what's man-made? So they said, look, the things that we can identify as the earliest and the most widespread, because if it's God's word, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be, make sure that it's spread. So if something was just very regional, just known in one area, it didn't, they said, no, that's, we're, we're not gonna include that one. So they actually had selection criteria for the, you know, for the books. And it wasn't because it was all male-dominated, and they said, well, we're not gonna include women in it, because that aspect of the church didn't happen until later. It happened, that, that, but if we take a look at it, it was more hundred to seven hundreds when this, that we can tra, trace that, because a lot of the early martyrs at the time of four hundred to five hundred were women. They were women. And we also know that women are so important, because church life swings on a pendulum, and it goes from being incredibly singular oriented, and we look at those, and we see the hermits and things like that, you know, and then it swings back to these big, to these big groups, and the bigger the church, and so. But really, the, the truth is in the middle. And so at one point there in the medieval period, it was the women who were consecrated. They were actually, they were seld in the wall of a church. And they would sit there, and then they would, they would have these visions. And, and they were very important to the church coming back to where, where they should be. So I can give you some of those examples, and there's that, there's actually English translations of their writings. It's really interesting to read.
Actually, that might be a nice topic, too, that some of the, in books of the Bible, to go through some of them.
Yeah, well, it, these are more experiential people that were, you know, writing at a time. Who was it? I'll think about it. We could do that. I mean, I have. Yeah, I mean, it, it's like, if you look at like Saint Francis of Assisi and those types of people, though, they were all very influential, not only in the church, but they were also influential in culture at the time, too, which was important. So, you know, we don't have to just do, we don't have to stick with books of the Bible. We can look at how, how the Bible's been applied, you know, in different times and places. And, and the Presbyterian Church USA is great, because we have these things called the confessions, right? And, and how many, have times have anybody picked up the confession and looked at and see what it says? And we don't hold it as scripture, but what we say is that the, that the confessions were produced by churches to, to issues at the time, and this was the church's response to them. And that it was God speaking in that time and place. And so the latest one that we put in was called the Belhar, and that was done in South Africa as a response to apartheid. So that's our latest confession, and then there was a big argument within the Presbyterian Church, whether we were gonna include it in our, before that, the newest one was the confession of nineteen sixty-seven, which is, I also call it, that's the hippie confession. It's all, well, stuff like that.
We, we have a banner for every one of those, but we're missing the last one, I think.
They were done by the Presbyterian women back in, I think, the nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies.
I think we're missing one.
So in Homer, in Homer, when we got there, they had those, there was a lo, there was a loft, you know, across the back. And they put those, they had some, the Presbyterian women had made those in the early seventies, and they had put them up, and they had never been taken care of, and so they were faded, and they were made out of felt. And the middle one was the Barman's Declaration, which was the church's answer, the confessing church's answer to Nazi Germany. So there's a Nazi symbol on it, right?
We have one.
There's a big circle crossed through it, you know, saying, no Nazism. Well, the Homer's one had faded so much, you couldn't see the thing going through. It was just this big Nazi thing, and I kept saying, you know, get this out of here, so.
Yeah, we just had those out not too long ago.
Yeah. Well, but I asked the question, I said, who knows? Who knows what these are? And they go, oh, well, you know, we have a little thing. And I say, yeah, but when was the last time that was done? So, and I said, you know, when somebody comes in here and they're visiting, and they don't know anything about it, all they see is a Nazi symbol, and they go, what's this church about? Now, what's this church about? So, well, the way we got rid of them is that they decided to paint the, one summer, they decided to paint the the whole sanctuary, so we had to take it down. And they disappeared. It was a miracle. They just disappeared.
We're gonna take off, guys. All right.
All right. Bye, guys.
Bye.
Have a nice.
I'll call you, Tom.
All right.
Miss everyone on Thursday.
Okay, I'll see you all on Thursday.
All right, Thursday, too. We'll see you all then, all right?
All right.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
God bless. We can see you all.
Bye-bye.
All right, goodbye.